I'd like to call this meeting order. Clark?
Adequate notice of this meeting was provided and according to Chapter 231 Public Law 1975.
At this time, I'd like to have a moment of silent meditation and let's ask the Almighty to bless those people that don't have air conditioning that we have. Well, we really don't have it in this room at this point in time, but it's still a lot better here than outside. So, and especially anyone that's homeless. So, ask him to protect those individuals while we do this meditation. I'd like to have the flag salute. We're going to be led by Governor Romero. A flag, but we just sit by the United States of America and to the other which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clark?
Commissioner Alstino.
Here.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Here.
Commissioner Romero.
Here.
Commissioner Lutz.
Present.
Commissioner Taylor.
Present.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Here.
Director Sorrow.
Here.
Do I have a motion in second to accept the dissent with the reading of the minutes from the last public meeting? Some move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In correspondence dated May 28, 2025, Atlantic City Electric gave notice of reissued order in the matter of petition, Atlantic City Electric Company for approval of amendments to its power to provide for an increase in rates and charges for electric service, BPU docket number ER 24110854, OEL docket number PUC 17805-2024S. We are in compliance with NJSA 48:2-17 so that the ordinance may be read by title only. Do I have a motion in second that ordinance be read on final reading by title only? Some move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance 2025-3 approving cap bank for the 2025 county budget. Do I have a motion in second to open public hearing on an ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public who wish to speak on ordinance 2025-3 approving cap bank for the 2025 county budget may step forward, state your name and where you're from.
Seeing none, motion closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion in second that ordinance 2025-3 be finally adopted?
Some move?
Second. Commissioner Alstino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Here.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
The ordinance published here when has finally been adopted on June 24, 2025, and is effective immediately upon passage. Do I have a motion in second for resolution to be read by budget, but read budget by title only? Some move? Commissioner Alstino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Do I have a motion in second to open public hearing on 2025 county budget and tax resolution? Motion to open public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Alstino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand. Deputy Director Marchand. Director Sorrow.
Yes. If there is anyone from the public that would like to come forward and talk about the 2025 county budget, they may do so now. And please state your name and where you're from.
Sandy Acevedo, Upper Deerfield Township. I have these written down also that I can give afterwards. The first issue, the question that I have is on the budget message. Can somebody explain to me what the structural budget imbalance means? What does that phrase mean and cover? And the, um... The, um, on page, I have page three even, but I don't think that's the correct page number. Is this amount, this 1,9508788, the amount the feds through the state that would be considered the Medicaid reimbursement difference? And is this the county's piece for that? My second question is, how long do the retirees and spouses get county health benefits paid? On 3E3...
All right, hold on one second. Chris, are you writing these questions down? Okay, I just want to make sure. I just want to make sure we didn't miss something. All right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
On 3E3, the constitutional officers' budget, can somebody explain the exact reason for the increases in the sheriff, the surrogate, and the board of taxation's budgets? And 4C, what pilots is this revenue coming from? What townships and cities do these pilots come from or projects do they reflect? And 5, what is the state's sal... What is the state's salary subsidies for the constitutional officer salaries based on? It looks like there's a revenue from the state for those offices. What's the basis for that number? Page 7, the NJSL Capital Project Fund, Community Center Digital Connect. What exactly is this line item and how come nothing was budgeted for 2025? On 7E, the social services for the homeless, the million 500? Where does that money go? I know we've seen money to different warming centers and things like that, but what exactly within social services does this money cover? On page 8, the, um, I don't think we've really gotten a detailed budget on where the 5.2 million in COVID money was spent. I was wondering if we could get some kind of recap on the COVID money and where it was spent? And also the surplus activity. I know it said in there that we only budget for what excess we had the previous year. One, why do we have so much excess that we can budget that kind of money? Where's that excess coming from? And I'd like to see the, some analysis of how much we've been using and does that match the surplus that's available the previous year? In the budget message, there was a comment made that in the current and future budget years, there must be a series of planning, design processes that need to result in a path forward. Do we have a path? Has a path been established to get a handle on these expenses? And when will the public see such a plan and design? The budget message also references the county jail's future changing. Do we know what that change looks like yet? And I don't think that we've really been fully advised on what changes are in future for the county jail. The budget message also indicates that there is some type of, an additional union contract being negotiated?
We have 30 seconds.
And, um... Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to step forward and ask any kind of questions?
Good evening, this is Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield Township. I'd like to note we're still looking at a 5% decrease in the tax rate for the county.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ridgeway.
And also, I would like to thank the county economic development department for all the economics that they have brought to the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ridgeway. Is there anybody else that would like to step forward? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close?
Seeing none, motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call, then.
Commissioner Alstino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes. Okay, to our CFO as best as you can since we don't have everything in front of you. See if you can answer some of the questions.
As quickly as possible. So, structural imbalance is basically our...
Can you speak up or grab a mic? Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Yeah, so a structural imbalance is basically an anticipated loss in revenue or an appropriation in the future that we perceive could potentially be a problem in our budget. For example, rising costs of pension plans, that's a significant structural imbalance for the county. Healthcare costs increasing 8, 10, 15%. State health benefit plan enrollment.
I'll tell you what, just grab that microphone and bring it to you.
Just the some numbers of the...
There you go. This way you have the stuff in front of you.
Okay. Better?
Better.
Okay. So, I don't know if you got all that. Structural imbalance is basically...
Bring it closer.
Structural imbalance is basically the county anticipating that there's going to be a higher cost associated with things like a pension plan, health benefit costs, subsequent will have an impact in future year budgets. In summary, um, what else do we have? 3E1. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Har.
And the number is 1.5 million. I don't see that number as referenced. 3E1.
I think it was 3E1, was it 3E?
3E1, that's what you said.
I don't have 1.5 million on 3E1, so I'll skip. 3E3, sheriff. So, 3E3 is essentially state mandated constitutional officers' calculation, which is required by state. So, the increases shown here are basically cost of living increases for salaries. Just to make a note also, there was only one that exceeded this year, and that was the surrogate. So, the sheriff's budget's actually a decrease from last year if you look at this. That's what the negative indicates. Pilot revenues, there's five municipalities in the county, Vineland, Bridgeton, both deerfields, and, um, who else? Bridgeton, sorry. Constitutional officer. So, the state puts out what's called a local finance notice every year for constitutional salaries, and they reimburse the county a portion of their salaries, and it's called a base rate. And every year, there's an inflation adjustment for that. So, I can show you the local finance notice if you'd like to see it. That's the basis of those numbers. Opera funds. So, those funds were taken into the budget essentially to offset jail costs in two previous budget cycles, and those are no longer available to the county. All the surplus figures are available on our website. We have budgets, audits, and financial statements there. You can see what the beginning balance was at the beginning of the year. You can see what was used in the budget, what was regenerated, and then the final ending balance.
Mr. Har, is the breakdown of the COVID funds on there, of the RFPs, or not?
Um, no, there's no breakdown.
Okay, because I know some were spent on the jail, as you say, some were spent on the Department of Health and...
Yeah, that was just one component of it.
Okay.
But the funding mechanisms, they allow you to take up to $10 million over two years, and that's what the county did.
I understand, but the public was asking for a breakdown of how those funds were spent.
Oh, yeah, I don't have that on me right here.
If that was available anywhere.
Yeah, we could, we could get it. Yeah, we can get it.
You just put it inside her plate for...
There's just a lot of different things, so...
Yeah, yeah, we can get it.
We can get that?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Path forward. Trying to see what page that was on. Budget message. Path forward. I don't see anything about a path forward in the budget message, unless I'm missing it. Uh, budget method, message path forward. Do you have a sheet number?
It's on the budget message page.
Sandy Acevedo, you talked about this, the sheet that was here that was a presentation, or you talked about the actual budget?
No, there's a budget message page inside the budget.
Okay.
We can provide a response. 3F? What are you providing, including information, or an email tour? Yeah, we absolutely could do that.
How about if we do that? Because it seems to be that there's a little bit difference of the numbers you have and then the numbers he has. He has all your questions down. All right, how about if we get that to you through email? Is that all right?
That's fine, but then I'll be able to read his answers?
Well, that's, that's, yeah. That's what he's going to do. He's going to give you the answers to this question.
And there was another question you had about the community, um...
The digital, yeah.
Community digital direct, is that what you said?
Digital connect.
Digital connect.
Senator, digital connect, yeah. I wasn't sure what that was.
Is that an easy answer?
I don't know.
Well, that'll get all the stuff.
I'll get it all.
Get it to her, because there's a lot of things he doesn't have right there.
Understood.
And all we're doing is putting him on the spot.
Kim has a copy, so she'll share it with...
Exactly. All three of them have everything that she asked, to make sure that we didn't miss anything.
Then I think we can answer Mrs. Ridgeway's questions.
Yeah, we definitely can. So, the answer is quite simply yes. It's still 5%.
Right, okay, thank you. All right, that's, that's move on to...
Resolution. Resolution 2025-331, resolution of the County of Cumberland, State of New Jersey, amending the 2025 Cumberland County Introduce Budget pursuant to NJSA 4A:4-9. Do I have a motion in second? Some move?
Second.
Commissioner Alstino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-332, resolution adopting the 2025 county budget authorizing $107,020,000 to be raised by taxation in support of the county budget. Do I have a motion in second?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Director.
Second.
Before we, look, can I ask a question, though? Director, can you clarify who are, who is our finance committee? Who's the, who the members of our finance committee are?
It was Arthur, me, our BA, and our CFO.
Well, isn't traditionally three commissioners are usually on that committee? Isn't that the traditional three members of our board?
Okay, well, we had two this time, and we have a balanced budget.
Yeah, but the input into the budget would be nicer if there were more members, at least one more member, to say, to express the opinion of the board, not just the CFO that works for you, the BA that works for you, but a commissioner that, that's, and I won't say the statement it was made, but there are certain things in this that are planned that I would like a discussion about and which I probably agree with, but it would be nice that there are members input from a commissioner.
If every commissioner had the opportunity to sit down with their spark and go over the budget, okay? And if they had any questions, they could have raised the questions at that point in time, and we could have worked on it. This budget was brought in over a month ago.
Yeah, I'm not arguing it brought in, but as the budget being put together, the director has big influence on this budget, but it would be nice traditionally to have more than one commissioner on that board.
Did you have the opportunity to talk to him?
Yeah, absolutely, I already said that.
Then you've been able to.
I didn't say I didn't have input.
Didn't you have one?
It's the question, and I asked you a question.
And I said we picked two commissioners?
No, no, I asked you another question personally, asked you a question that I would like to talk about something, and you had a problem with that, and that's something that should have been discussed, because it's been talked about several times in this board, that the, of an idea that you're pursuing, and I would like, and I...
Well, it's not in the budget right now.
Well, actually, actually, I asked the question, it is, it is kind of in the budget.
It is, because it hasn't been formulated yet.
All right, with that said, that we are putting $6 million aside that we, traditionally, again, I'm very happy we're doing it, that we're actually putting money aside to, instead of borrowing our normal, so much money every year we borrow to buy trucks or computers or whatever, that that money's put aside, and I was told that that was where the money's being put aside for...
Well, he told us.
I was, I was told.
I want to know who told you?
No, I'm not going to tell you, all right?
But by the way, I was asking the director, and I don't even know about that.
Well, the money was put aside, and I'm not going to say that publicly.
Well, I know, that's a different transportation.
Okay.
But the thing is, nobody, nobody was put aside.
No one.
Transportation, not, zero. Do you know what that means? Zero. Okay? If you want to make something up, make something up.
I'm not making something up. I asked a question.
I didn't even say it was a question. Nobody was put aside for the transportation.
All right, so none of that money's going to go to that trans...
As far as I know, there's nothing going.
All right, that's fair enough, then. All right, but I also want to express the, I would like another commissioner to be...
Well, we'll talk about that next year.
All right, well, you're...
Because our budget is done.
I know that. But you're going to start following the budget for next year? We should at least have a three...
We didn't even start yet.
Are you going to start looking at the budget next year?
We haven't talked about it yet.
All right.
Okay?
Well, maybe it should have been done back further, that if I'd known that...
Do we have a balanced budget?
No, you have 5 cent...
We have, that's why I voted for it.
That's why I voted for it. That doesn't justify not having...
And were you able to talk to the CFO?
I did talk to the CFO.
Okay, you were able to input anything you wanted to say.
That's not, that's not incorrect. I was looking at a budget that was already done.
And you could have changed your answer, changed anything.
And I told you what I saw that was problematic. I asked you to have a discussion about it, and you had a hemorrhage about it.
I did not.
All right, anyway, so would you consider that for next year, Director?
Gentlemen.
I think that the point is that Commissioner Albrecht thinks we should be three people on, I think that's a valid one that we can discuss. And that's there. Anything else? That's the rule.
Commissioner Alstino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow. Do I have a motion in second to open public comment on resolutions only? Make the motion to open public comment on resolutions only?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If anybody would like to step forward and talk about any of the resolutions, resolutions only, please come forward and state your name and where you're located from.
Seeing none, motion closed.
Second.
Good afternoon, this is Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield Township.
Take it back, we had a technical delay.
Go ahead, Ms. Ridgeway, sorry about that.
I'd like to go back to the last meeting with resolution 2025-351. It's a resolution amending resolution 24168, awarding contracts for providing little malls, broadband, grid, service, engineering services for the counties of Cumberland and Stone to expand it for one month. And I believe it was stated at the last meeting, that this is no money involved, it's just cleaning up your act. Your act cost us... It cost 3 million, over 3 million dollars for this engineering. 3,526,000 dollars. I want to know, what did we get for that money? What engineering services, where were they working? How far has this broadband come along in the counties of Cumberland and Stone? Where does it stand at this point in time? Has Stone been paying their fair, fair share? These are some important questions. Where is broadband? That we have two resolutions, and let's have that broadband, thank you.
Anybody else that would like to come forward?
Seeing none, motion closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would you like to take that?
I would speak.
Okay.
You speak.
Our BA will speak about that.
Thank you, Ken.
Basically, the number, the number that's been expended to this point paid out is roughly 2 million. Am I correct in that range?
Yes.
It's roughly 2 million, not 3, 3-plus million. We have been reimbursed well over, somewhere in the range of a little over 1 and 1/2 million. So, we, 70%, of which our responsibility is 18%, and Salem's is 12%. So, roughly, we're under 500,000 at this point, still waiting for some bills to get cleared up. At that point, the engineering up to and including the, um, the environmental has been complete, the drawing of the lines, the locations for where they anticipate the broadband to be fed throughout the county to serve our taxpayers, our communities, that has been completed. There are no shovels that have hit the ground. This is purely engineering expense to this point. There is no construction that has, has taken place, because we are not in the construction phase. At this point, Salem, I think, is all but right, right up to the edge, maybe a few thousand dollars.
Just a few invoices outstanding.
A few invoices outstanding of their portion. We outweigh the funds, and then we get reimbursed back from NTIA, the federal, federal, federal agency who manages, manages this process. So, we get refunded from them, the 70% from the grant, and we get paid back 12% of the total expenditures from sale, and they're all but just about even. At this point, we're under 500,000 dollars of expenditures for the county at this moment. Okay. There is no, um, at this point, we, without, without having a contractor that has replied to the RFP, we are at a standstill in that expense for construction. There's no construction, and we are, we're not, we're not expending any more money until we know where we're going to go from here.
Director, if I could add the, actually, because I asked questions about it, it's that we, by doing this, this extra month, gives us an opportunity to finish up all those numbers, to actually get the results of what they produce, right?
We have, we have all the copies.
Not at all.
We have all the drawings, we have all the planning that's been done by the engineer to this point. The only thing we're really waiting for, they have, they requested change orders to the tune of $243,000 for environmental work that they claim was not involved in the original contract that we questioned. And then there's also some what they call TRUUP dollars, which are basically things that they claim will make us whole on contract or on the trees. So, hence, that's why you need to ask. It's only right, it's only fair that we, that we allow them to maintain their position for another 30 days. We don't, you know, if they can prove that, or if they can state that unimply that they have done work that we owe them for, once again, approved work, because once again, unapproved work and a change order does not qualify for a repayment. It's, that's our, that's this county's position, and that will always be our position. At this point, that's where we're at.
As of this point also, there were a lot of mistakes made to get to the figure where you're at with that change order in the first place.
Yes.
So, there's still questions on that change order.
Many.
Exactly. So, as things go by, we've been finding situations that weren't according to the way they were written down.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, Ms. Manana, I appreciate you taking the time and doing the due diligence on the county's behalf to make sure that all of those numbers were checked off properly, and that everything was being done that we were being billed for. Thank you.
Continue.
Do I have a motion and second to vote by consent reg, consent agenda on Resolutions 2025-333 through 2025-361?
Do you have to pull the one?
No.
No.
No, it was a different one, and that was pulled.
That was ordered.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Do you need to make the motion to vote on the consent agenda?
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Do I have a motion and second to adopt Resolutions 2025-333 through 2025-361 by consent?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-362, resolution authorizing a sub grant agreement with the Cumberland County Improvement Authority Clean Communities Program. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Did we make the changes?
Yes, that's a good question.
Did we make the changes? The idea was to actually ask the county to be nu, recognized that it's a pass through, I guess John Car-
To include, to include the county's logo on promotional materials associated with this program.
It's not just the CCIA, but it's also the Cumberland County Board of-
That was requested at the last work session, were you able to talk with, or have you found that?
They are working on it, they're working on it. We, we don't have the exact final decision, because they do fund that themselves.
What, what do you mean fund? This program is funded to-
No, I'm talking about any of those promotional materials.
Oh, don't, don't those come out of the screen of the county?
Mostly not.
Well, there's the ones that come out.
Dissemination of that.
Well, then, if that's the case, then I'd say table this.
Yeah, great.
Okay, um, yeah, we-
So we can have a-
Well, we need to answer. Okay, if you have something, you don't have an answer.
It's, it's done all the time, the different, or wherever the money comes from, and it's being passed through by us.
Sure.
So, and it's not-
Well, the, the only thing I can adhere to is that is, not all grant money that you're allowed to advertise or promote. For example, uh, with the, I'm trying to think what, with mental health drug and alcohol, I had asked the question, well, how come we are not promoting our programs? I said, how come we're not paying for promotional literature? And I remember at the time, it was running at a, a area, she was in charge, she said, well, the grant doesn't allow us to do it. So, if they turn around and say, okay, well, the grant's not allowing it, that we would have to pay for it, then I would say, even though it's going through us, if we wanted to go in together, then that would not be an unreasonable request.
And we certainly recognize that as well.
Okay, so, what the, our, what Kevin's gonna have to do is talk to them and see where we stand on that. Is, is the grant money allowable, are you allowed to use the grant money to promote the, the program? If it is, then we wanna be on it. If it isn't, then I think it would be behooves us to see if we can be part of the promotional program, and we might have to take in some of our own money.
Well, it's, actually, I, it's been asked before, previous commissioners are around about way, that this money, it's not a pass through, it's not, I understand what you're saying, there are ones, but this is different, this comes from tax, from a liter tax money that's put on businesses, so there's no reason, and it comes to the county, not to the, not to the CCIA, so I would think we got the right, but the director's right, let's get their opinion, but the bottom line is that they promote themselves through this, and it should only be fair if we have our logo somewhere in there.
So I think we need to vote to table this.
Wait a minute, I need, so, I need to rescind my motion, yes. Now I need to motion to table.
Correct, I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, do you need a roll call?
No.
No, you table it, you do it.
Okay.
You can do a roll call, it's, it's a standard, it's on the-
No, no, I just wanted to make sure that's because it's a resolution, you can table it. Okay, very good.
Resolution 2025-363, resolution awarding a contract for providing out-of-school youth industry focus training and internship program services in Cumberland County. Do I have a motion and second?
I make a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-364, resolution awarding a contract for providing virtual reality, reality career exploration simulations. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-365, resolution awarding a contract for providing one-stop career services, WIIOA Title I-V adult dislocated worker and youth services for the county of Salem. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-366, resolution awarding contract for replacement of structure, 06HO-001, Friesburg Road, do I have a, Friesburg Road, do I have a motion and second? Friesburg Road?
Yep.
Commissioner?
Second.
Sorry. Do I have Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-364, resolution awarding a contract for providing virtual reality, reality career exploration simulations. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-365, resolution awarding a contract for providing one-stop career services, WIIOA Title I-V adult dislocated worker and youth services for the county of Salem. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-366, resolution awarding contract for replacement of structure, 06HO-001, Friesburg Road, do I have a, Friesburg Road, do I have a motion and second? Friesburg Road?
Yep.
Commissioner?
Second.
Sorry. Do I have Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-364, resolution awarding a contract for providing virtual reality, reality career exploration simulations. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-364, resolution awarding a contract for providing virtual reality, reality career exploration simulations. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-368, resolution approving budget amendment Highway Safety Improvement Program, additional thirty-one thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-368, resolution approving budget amendment Highway Safety Improvement Program, additional thirty-one thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-361, resolution approving budget amendment SFY 2025, alternative responses to reduce instances of violence and escalation together critical incident model grant program, forty-nine thousand, nine hundred twenty-four dollars and eight cents. Do I have a motion and second?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-371, resolution approving budget amendment SFY 2025, alternative responses to reduce instances of violence and escalation together critical incident model grant program, forty-nine thousand, nine hundred twenty-four dollars and eight cents. Do I have a motion and second?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-373, resolution approving budget amendment Children's System of Care, CSOC slash CIA CC program, thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Do I have a motion and second?
Motion.
Second. Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-374, resolution approving budget amendment and change in title and text, 2025 Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, seventy-five thousand dollars. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-376, resolution approving budget amendment SFY 26, Child Protection and Permanency Grant Program, three hundred twenty-one thousand dollars. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
And it's the obvious choice because this is a Pocket, this Potter Tavern is a Pocket Park, not a storage structure that...
We reached out to the New Jersey Historic Trust, and because it's not directly attached to Potter's Tavern itself, they were concerned that their funding would not qualify.
And the vision of this park, is it similar to what we just dedicated that, or a little different? I see you said wheelchair accessibility, but is there other things that's gonna make it possible?
So the intent is to come up with a design that is, you know, that'll look at if we can put interpretive signage in there, if we can promote the history of Potter's Tavern within the park space. It's supposed to, the intent is to provide conceptual design for what could happen in that park.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loods.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-370, Resolution Approving Budget Amendment, Workforce New Jersey Grant, twenty-five thousand dollars. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loods.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-371, Resolution Approving Budget Amendment, SFY 2025, Alternative Responses to Reduce Instances of Violence and Escalation Together Critical Incident Model Grant Program, forty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars and eight cents. Do I have a motion and second?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loods.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-372, Resolution Approving Budget Amendment, New Jersey County Prosecutor's Insurance Fraud Reimbursement Program, one hundred and forty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy cents. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loods.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-373, Resolution Approving Budget Amendment, Children's System of Care, CSOC slash CIA CC Program, thirty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Do I have a motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loods.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-374, Resolution Approving Budget Amendment and Change in Title and Text, 2025 Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, seventy-five thousand dollars. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loods.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor, Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-375, Resolution Approving Budget Amendment, Community Peer Recovery Center, sixty-three thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars additional. Do I have a motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loods.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-376, Resolution Approving Budget Amendment, Clean Communities Grant, Fiscal Year 2025, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and nine cents. Do I have a motion and second?
Able to do this?
Motion.
Second.
Does that have to get tabled in the other one that table?
Is this the plan?
Are they connected?
Yeah.
That was something from one.
Yeah, but is this one part of the same disbursement of money?
Is that budget amendment part of that grant that we tabled earlier?
Just the book.
Three sixty-two?
Three, three seventy-six. This is accepting the money.
That's what I thought, yeah, is this accepted?
We're accepting the money to us.
Is the other one approving it and someone's accepting it?
Yeah, that's going to the IA, so this is for us.
Okay.
So we can still accept it?
Yeah, they made a motion.
Good question.
We're taking the money in ourselves.
Second.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, a second on the board.
I'm running a second.
Oh, you, okay. Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loods.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-377, Resolution Authorizing Purchases from New Jersey State Contract Vendor for RFGIS Software Maintenance Annual Renewal for Planning Department and County Engineers' Office. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loods.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-378, Resolution Amending Resolution 2024-732, Entitled Resolution Authorizing Application to and Acceptance of Fiscal Year Twenty-Three Justice Assistance Grant Program from the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety, Office of the Attorney General for the County Prosecutor's Office. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loods.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-379, Resolution Authorizing Application for Renewal of the Child Protection and Permanency Grant Program, Contract Number Twenty-Six SF-0170. Do I have a motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loods.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-380, Resolution Approving Budget Amendment, SFY Twenty-Six, Child Protection and Permanency Grant Program, three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loods.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-381, Resolution Approving Budget Amendment, Twenty-Twenty-Six, Blind and Visually Impaired, twenty-seven thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loods.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-382, Resolution Appointing Dawn Bowen as Interim Emergency Management Engineer. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loods.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-383, Resolution Authorizing Purchase of Liam Connect System for the Cumberland County Department of Corrections. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loods.
My vote is yes, and I just want to commend the jail and human services. I know they were using part of their grant to get this, and the system, just in case anyone doesn't understand, scans in all of the mail that the inmates are sending and receiving, and this is really just for the protection of our COs and those who are sending and receiving the mail and who's handling it, in case there's any substances or anything like that on there, but our, the residents can still share their messages, they can still communicate, but this does ensure everybody's safety, so I think this is a really good investment of funds that we were receiving, so, yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-384, Resolution Authorizing the Award of Non-Hare and Open Contract for Providing Professional Legal Services to the Cumberland County Regarding PFAS Contamination Claims on Behalf of the Cumberland County Fire Academy. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loods.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-385, Resolution Rejecting All Proposals Proceeds for Providing Life and Accidental Death and Disability Insurance for the County of Cumberland, RMP Number Twenty-Five-Twenty-One, Resubmission and Authorizing the Re-Advertising For Proposals. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loods.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Do I have a motion and second to accept treasurer's report as stated?
Do I have a motion to accept treasurer's report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion and second for authorizing payment of all salaries and wages?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion and second to open public comment on new cases and items only?
Ms. Director, I make the motion to open public comment on new items only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wish to address the board on new items only, step forward, give name and location?
Good evening, this is Nancy Richway again from Upper Deerfield Fairfield Township. I would like to know the answer to Sandy Asavina's question for the budget. I don't understand how sending her an email complies with open public reading. And was there listed the name of, it would be six dollars seven. Uh, thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Richo, what was the last part of your question?
Siphon.
Oh, siphon.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Sharon Chapini. I'm in Fairfield Township. I'm here on behalf of learning the news that the satellite library was, I get really nervous, sorry. Anyway, Mars Township, there was gonna be a satellite library with services out there, and that grant was stopped. And my husband contacted Mr. Smannato, okay, because I am a member of the Friends of Cumberland County Library, and we do a lot of work to raise funds to benefit our library, and we're very passionate about it. And so, my husband and I, well, he's a member of the Friends group also, but this was so needed, we were here on behalf before of this project, and the rumor mill was just that all of you really dropped the ball. So we're not ones not to reach out and try to find out what the truth is. So my husband did have conversations with Mr. Smannato, who did address a lot of our concerns, and so I wanted to thank you for that. I understand Mr. Carr probably also had some input as well, and I appreciate that. My question is, are there any chances of resurrecting that? Because that is so needed out there. There's so far out there from services, and I assure you all know this, but a library is not just about books anymore. It really is a resource. It's a safe public space, and I appreciate that. When I'm in the library as a volunteer, and the people I meet, and the children, we do a free book program, and I meet grandmothers who are like, wow, I can get this book for my grandchild I couldn't buy a book. You know, so my heart is very dear to the library. It means a lot to me. So I just know that we need outreaches all over the county, but particularly Mars River Township. So for whatever happened, I hope you'll consider maybe finding funds or other other grants, but it's such a worthwhile project that I really hated to see disappear. Thank you.
Mr. Director, I'd say, I appreciate you coming over here because I believe that libraries, and it's a library in name because it's a very broad building, would have done a lot, especially for illiteracy, the type of, the illiteracy in that area, and commercial and worship attachment, which there is no libraries at, school libraries are not, there is none really. So it would really went after that problem, but it was not just the library. It was also supposed to be a kind of a kickstart to the economic development, so, and the worship attachment and commercial attachment, we're really looking forward to having that facility there. I'll just say one thing, and I'll, about, it's the first time of all, it's always been in government that I've ever had a grant taken back from us a year before it was, it was over, a year. Maybe, maybe we're perfect, but we usually got the job done a year. So I, I put, we, I'll say, Mr. Smannato, that he went to back for this, the state to say, we'll get it done, we'll make it happen, just, you know, and they still wouldn't give at all. So, so, yeah, if you want to throw money to us, fine, but, but the state, what they did was not, was, was very questionable what they did, so I'll say that, so.
We appreciate you coming in. I would like to add, Commissioner Albrecht's words as well, but there were a lot of grants, there was a lot of money that was pulled back from the state. I think they were seeing a lot of budget shortfalls with this administration, so hopefully in the new administration, we can revisit this and begin to advocate to bring that here. I'm an educator, I'm a twelve-year English teacher here in Cumberland County. I've been in Vineland, Millville, and Bridgeton, and so very much understand the need for not only that as a community center, but certainly as a place for literacy and programs and to bring your kids. I always brought my kids to the Cumberland County Library, the Vineland Library, the Millville Library when they were growing up, and it is a fantastic resource and certainly needed in that area. This was something that was completely out of our hands and was pulled back by the state of New Jersey and the governor. So we're hoping that under a new administration, perhaps we can revisit this. Thank you so much for coming out and your continued advocacy.
Yes, ma'am.
Shoshana Osofsky, Fairfield Township. I just want to say I'm out here because I also support our libraries. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shoshana.
Sandy Asavina, Upper Deerfield Township. I'm lost. I didn't realize that we lost that, that grant for, for the library. And, and can we, I know that we've lost some other, like the Nab Road Extension and, and those types of projects. Can we differentiate between whether the state cut the grant or whether it came down from the federal level to have the grant cut?
Please, let's do that, because the Nab Avenue was not a grant that was received, that was a proposed idea that we were searching for funding for.
Correct.
There was earmarked money set aside, but that was pulled out of the budget, but there is talk of fully resurrecting, hopefully.
Right, and I guess I'm just curious whether that was...
We're beginning to advocate for that. That was money that was earmarked in the state budget to do projects like that.
Federal.
I'm sorry, federal budget, I apologize. To do, I'm still on the library.
No, that's all right.
To do projects like that, and we were advocating to see if that was a good fit for that program, and we're gonna continue to do so.
The Congress made it the senator booth role.
We do have the state and federal positions right now advocating for that as well.
Okay, so, but do we know whether it was actually federal money that went to the state, through the state to us?
For the Nab Avenue?
No, for the library.
For the library, it was a state grant.
A state grant? Thank you.
Anyone else like to come forward? Say nothing, motion to close.
Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner reports.
Commissioner Romero would like to, so.
Well, I was gone for a few weeks and to get some doctor work done, but I attended the Board of Health meeting, and everything is going well with them. They have a few questions they would like to ask. It's the heart from the budget, and I'm gonna ask you if you could come to a meeting with me, because they want to answer some of that. I also attended the Board of Elections, and they had issues with the vote, vote workers being paid, and it turned out that, that it's coming to a due date, and it turns out that we just got this, a letter a few days ago to tell us what, you know, what, what, that we were coming down to a deadline. So we will try and fix this with the Board of the Election, because, you know, we didn't know about this in two days, two days ago. So other than that, it's been a pretty smooth month for me. I mean, Peru was nice, but, but, you know, everything is going well. Oh, by the way, we do have the Puerto Rican break coming up, and we're working on that coming next month. I invite everybody that'll be there. We're gonna have a flag raising on the twentieth. I hear we have, we're gonna have people, like, if you want to meet them, like, Jack Cittarello's coming, the, he's a person that, as opposed to him, is, is also from the Democrat Party, is coming there, and they're gonna be, it's gonna be open for the public, and which you guys will come along on the twentieth and one o'clock at the Vineland City Hall, and we're gonna have the flag raising there, and on the thirty, on the thirtieth, we're gonna have the parade. So I invite everybody to be there and take part.
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Taylor.
Hi, just, just want to say I'm very pleased that Dawn Bowen is gonna be our emergency management person, and she should do a fantastic job. Chris Hart, thank you for all you did with the budget, and I know you'll get those questions answered very quickly. The, the library, I just, I thank you for coming out and speaking so passionately, and I, I do want to say, recently, if you watch television, that they're using the libraries now as police centers, so you're correct, they're so much more than just the library. And I want to wish everyone a safe and a healthy, healthy for the job.
Thank you. Deputy Director?
So, I keep seeing all these pictures on social media of graduations. I gotta congratulate all the graduates, I think all the high schools, I think CC Tech is graduating tonight, so congratulations to all those graduates, and I know the other high schools, I think, have already had their graduations. The only event I want to talk about right now was two, actually, you can just remind me one, Sandy. So last year, we went to an event over at Potter's Tavern where they did a reading. That was great, so anyone who's interested in the Fourth of July, I don't remember the time, I'm gonna say it's noon or one o'clock, but it was a nice event last year. And then secondly, we have the county fair coming up, July ninth. Opening ceremonies are at five o'clock. I do that every year. Hope to see everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you, Commissioner Sorrow. Yes, I do want to thank our, our visitors here in support of the library. Again, I said a twelve-year veteran teacher here in Cumberland County, and teaching, you know, some of our most vulnerable students here in the county, and it is incredibly important to give them every kind of scaffolding and support that they can have, because a lot of times, they don't have that support at home, or we have English as a second language. I, I don't have to tell you if you're here in support of this, but they're, they need more than just the classroom. They need more than just the school library. They need, they need tutoring, they need a lot. There, there has to be repeat support systems that are offered to our community, and it goes far beyond that. I know recently, Vineland Library actually opened up a virtual reality center, so it definitely goes far beyond just the days of books. I will say that. Yes, we do have our Puerto Rican Parade coming up and Festival in Vineland, but we also do this year, we are celebrating our first countywide Puerto Rican festival at the county fairgrounds, so we're looking forward to that. I believe it's the first week of August.
August.
More dates on that to come at the next meeting. I am the liaison for the RCSJ Committee. We did this month swear in a new Board of Tresse members, member for the, from Cumberland County for RCSJ, and it was also Dr. Peeding's final meeting. We have a new president coming in, but before he left in his final meeting, he did present the budget for the upcoming year, and sort of a little year in review about what's been going on at the RCSJ Cumberland Campus. So since the merger has happened, they really have tackled this area with a regional approach, which does matter, and we are vastly different. We always say it, South Jersey is vastly different from North Jersey. One town, one area really does rely on the other for the success of the whole region as a whole. RCSJ Cumberland has been doing that. Through that regional approach, through making partnerships like the Rowan Virtual Health Partnership, we do now have Virtual Health on the Cumberland campus as well. We have millions of dollars in scholarships going to Cumberland County students. We've had, RCSJ has maintained keeping a very low tuition that supplements those, those grants and those scholarships for our students, and right now, we have, we've increased access we've increased access by about 30% that targets some of the highest poverty codes in the state of New Jersey. Actually, I take that back in this, in the entire country. We have some of the highest poverty codes right here in Cumberland County in the entire country, and we are, we've increased access to those students by 30% through this, through the work of RCSJ and their budget. Right now, they have made an increased investment in CTE, Career Technical Education Programs, certainly with the, the addition of the manufacturing building, which came from a state grant as well. We're going to be able to increase, I think, a little over 100 seats at CC Tech in several different programs, so we can serve more people, and that also, that building, I want to be very clear, is a partnership as well with Workforce and with RCSJ. So, it doesn't just service our high school students, it's servicing adults who are returning for education for career-ready jobs, and it's also servicing our college students who are looking for the technical education aspect. So, through all of this and their expanded investment in CTE programs, RCSJ right now is anticipating that they'll generate about $61.6 million in additional impact to drive long-term outcomes right here in Cumberland County by the year 2029. So, we're really excited to see where that goes. And yes, I have to say, Commissioner Marshawn, I'm a high school teacher here, right, so graduation's my thing, and last night I was at Millville's graduation, but tonight does mark the last graduation in Cumberland County, so now Bridgeton, Vineland, Millville, and CC Tech are all officially graduated, so be safe out there on the roads, and we wish them all the luck in their future endeavors.
Thank you. Victoria, uh, Rowan, it's a county, it's college, and it's on the top five ranked in the, in the country. So, I want you guys to be aware that we are doing a great job, not just because my, my son is one of the top guys, but, uh...
And he's in their promotional materials.
He's in here in materials today. So, but, uh, we have a good program going, and we will support our kids, and, you know, thank you for everybody that backed us up on this.
Thank you. Commissioner Ober.
Yeah, just, we had a couple of things happen. First off, our Pocket Park that's over Giles Street, the, was, we had cut a ribbon, and when we cut a ribbon, there must have probably been 100 people there playing on everything. The kids kicking the soccer balls, we're trying to just put stuff in the fence. It was really a nice event, and actually, I was, the, the best thing was them playing, that was being used, and it, and it seemed like that they, it wasn't the first time they've been there to play. So, that was a good opener for us, but then the Fairgrounds was a feature. We, we attracted the, the Indian tribes for the powwow back to Cumberland County for the first time in many, many years, and a perfect event. Place is left perfect. It was, it was, it did a great job. Plenty of people came out. It was, it was, it was really done well, and it reflects that we invested a lot in the Fairgrounds. Right after that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then the next one was the, was the, was the Kite Festival, which again, during a rainy day, it was packed. It seemed like everybody came out, and the best thing to me was the kids running around and spraying in the rain. So, it was really, it highlighted that this is just a great place to do something in.
And they all kept saying how much they enjoyed that facility in Cumberland County.
They said it over and over again, and it...
They really did. So, thank you to Public Works and...
It met all their needs, and, and hopefully it'll grow from there. So, I also got a chance to cut a ribbon down in the, the Bay Shore Center. Al Huber was recognized, a guy that volunteered, I guess, 30 years ago for helping to get the Bay Shore, the Base, Bay Shore Center established with Megan Renn when there wasn't even a building, but it's pulled, if anyone's been down there, it's actually pulled our, our history together. And Al Huber, the, the family was there, which was nice, and it was during Second Friday, so there was a lot of people there, and it just was a, a, a nice event, and it, and it just highlights, it just highlighted the county, the special, unique thing we have, and it looked that you don't really search, but you go to, and you have a good time. So, and the, and the band was playing in the background, it was good, so. I, I'm going to have to read my family here, so...
Don't mind me. I'm going to interpret your...
Yeah, thanks. The library, I'm glad they're here. The County Library right now is, is been, been served as liaison for a while on that board. Right now, we're in a, in a transition period, and I think we, we're going to come out and it's good. We have good people, good board. Always started with a real positive spirits, but we've done a lot with the library. That's why the Friends Group started, because we've come a long way. So, I'm really pleased to be part, you're part of it, and, and that will grow. So, and, and we're going to pursue every avenue we can with different things, and you, you know, the, the satellite with the vision was that, just like Gloucester County has a library system, somehow, maybe that's where we'd like to get to in Cumberland County, because we, it would, it just makes our numbers better, gives the kids, again, a chance to walk to somewhere to be, to get the, the, and a library they may not have there, which they don't in that area. They, you talk about the, the festival coming up, I think it starts on, it's actually July 6th, isn't it, the Wednesday, the ribbon cutting? Well, when you go there, in the Fairgrounds, I didn't mention that, we have a new archway that really introduces itself as a Cumberland County Fairgrounds. It's actually pretty neat, and I congratulate Matt and Melissa Hampel, and that really, and whoever else in the department that got it going, because it really is a nice, it's just a nice presentation when you walk into places. It just highlights everything else that's been done, and there'll be more done in the future. So, I, and the last thing is that I, I have a radio program that I lately been harping the homeless issue. We've been talking about all, all month so far, and just, and I say this to the Director and this board, one of the major problems of homeless is not, is the working poor, when I say working poor, they actually have a job, and they're living in their car. I actually did a lot of phone calls, kind of figure out what we can, what can be done, and, and bumped into the City of Vineland, their council people are actually doing a lot of stuff with homeless, bringing a lot of resources to bear. Some harsh stuff, but harsh in the sense that you, you gotta, you gotta either get help, they're willing to all the resources, the county resources to be brought to bear, any resource possible, getting IDs to, to getting help, addiction help, or just helping them attract resources. The City of Vineland's got a program, which I'm very pleased that they're doing, but that brought up some people calling that said, "What about us?" And so, I, I would, hopefully, in the future, and I'm not being very specific, but a couple ideas that, to, and I credit Melissa Niles to come up with an idea of, and she says it, it's the Golden Girl Syndrome, that people that pulling the resources together to live, to survive, but that takes some action from government to allow, because it's different, and it's, it's, it's different than, than just having family live together. And, but maybe in the future, we're going to see that. It also shows in that study that was done, that people are healthier when they actually are socializing with people than sitting in their house or wherever they are by themselves. So, I kind of think that maybe this is something, and I attack every one of you, that maybe we can have some ideas to figure out how we could, I'm, I'm not all for government solving the problem. We can work with private industry to help pull it together, but they may need help on the rules and regulations to allow something to happen, the traditional boarding house, or this experiment of bringing people together to share expenses. So, so I throw that out to you, so, thanks.
Commissioner Osteen.
I'd like to take this time to, again, Dawn, congratulate you on your new position. I've worked with you in the past. I know you do a great job. I've seen that you're very competent at it, and we're in good hands. Also, recently, I attended the CC Tech Scholarship Program. I, I sponsor a scholarship every year because I believe it's a good investment in our community and our kids, and it's great to see the various career paths that these young people are taking, and the amazing colleges and universities that they're going to be attending. So, it, it's a great school and great for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. What I'd like to do, one quick question.
Yeah, sure.
Notice, I might, I, I would, I would think it would be a good recommendation if, if there's items that, that Mrs. Azamino requested that we weren't able to answer, then we could get her to her own website, on the county website, so everybody can see it.
We would appreciate that.
That's not a problem. It's good.
We want everyone to be able to hear the response.
It's, it's accessible.
That's, that's a good idea. It's, I think it'll be, and it'll be open to the public.
Exactly.
So, not one person knows about it.
True.
It'd be very good. So, you can work on that, Chris. Appreciate it.
So, I guess that's official answers, right?
Yes. One I'd like to thank, our administration, our Department Head, Constitutional Officers, our Prosecutor, for all the help that they put into making this budget work. And I mean that sincerely. There was a lot of conversations between all those individuals, especially with our CFO, the Department Heads, and our BA, Kevin. We really appreciate the help you've given us. This would not have been able to happen without your help, and I mean that sincerely. Okay, and this was a, an interesting year in order to make this budget work, and it worked. So, we appreciate that. The other...
Chuck, take the truck, so.
Oh, did you want to speak?
I, I apologize. There was, normally, there's a Department Head.
We had to begin.
I, I didn't stay on the court here. If, if you don't mind.
Step forward.
It's not, it's good news.
Okay, now, step forward.
Well, then, definitely step. Step widely, in fact.
Good news from the jail.
Go ahead.
Chuck Albino, Director for Cumberland County Department of Corrections. First, I'd like to thank BA Smontiato and the Board for agreeing to add Resolution 383. That, Commissioner Lowe, thank you for your kind words on that. That was a really consolidated effort that involved the BA backing me on it. What happened was we, the DHS had given us a grant for MAT services. Due to an administrative oversight on their end, it never went through my office. In the beginning of this year, I became aware of the fact that I didn't feel we were utilizing all the resources that were available, and we got, working with DHS, and through their cooperation and the support of the administration, we were able to, DHS allowed us to amend our budget allocation.
Just, just let people know acronyms.
Okay.
Playing with...
Department of Health and Human Services, and it was actually under Addictive Services. MAT, for those that don't, aren't as familiar, MAT are the medications that we give to people with addiction problems. Methadone, you've probably heard of. Suboxone is another medication. It's a grant that comes from the state that assists us in providing those services to our incarcerated population. Thank you for...
I just wanted to...
And doing it on-site, which is a big...
On-site, for sure.
Yeah, so they don't have to be transported anywhere, which is...
Well, they do, but that's, that's a separate issue, but you'll, I'll tell you some of what we were able, so one of the things that we were able to accomplish, and, and while you pointed out the health benefits for our staff, the, the main benefit is preventing drugs from being smuggled into the facility. I don't want to get into all the capabilities it gives us, but trust us, it gives us an opportunity. Being, being able to acquire this device, this Liam, will enable us to plug a major, very difficult hole to plug in terms of blocking drugs, which, and again, just furthers to fuel their addiction. So, but in addition to that, some things that flew below your radar relative to the grant that I wanted to bring to your attention. In addition to the money that we were able to secure for that, we were, we were able to secure about $7,000 of additional equipment for MAT classroom TVs, films, and things that were needed. We're going to also acquire an additional MAT drug. It's, it's called Sublicate, and what it is, it's a same family of drugs like methadone and suboxins, but it's a, it's an injectable, long-acting drug, and what, what current studies are showing is that it's very effective if given at the time of release to, it drastically reduces the biggest risk for people who are drug-addicted for overdoses in their first three weeks after they're released from correctional facilities. So, what this does is it gives them, this is a longer-acting drug that gives them that same support that those other drugs do on a day-to-day basis for, it has a 40 to 60-day shelf life. It's going to be a voluntary program. It's not something you can force inmates to take, but we're going to work through education to get them. It's a very expensive drug, so we had to stay away until we could fund it. I'm going to be able to purchase probably, I'm, I'm going to do the math before we do it so we don't overspend, but somewhere probably in the neighborhood of $30,000 or $40,000 worth of Sublicate that we can get our program rolling. And I think importantly, especially in a tight budget year, we identified items that were charged against county funds that we'll now be able to claw back. I'm working with the, the CFO so that we'll be able to, like, claw back some money for officer salary that we used when we transported inmates to Vineland Treatment Center and some of our other areas. So, we should be able to, I'm hoping to be able to claw back maybe somewhere between $20,000 and $30,000 in county funds that we'll be able to reimburse the county
You can say anything.
From this grant.
On-site, great.
So, those are kind of things that kind of fly under the radar because they don't hit the threshold to get here, but I thought you should be aware. The second major issue that I wanted you to also be aware of is, I, I think most of you are aware, every year that we are subject to a rather in-depth inspection, and that's putting it politely, by the New Jersey Department of Corrections. It's an annual inspection where they evaluate us on about five, 550 standards, so it's really arduous process to get through. And once again, we had our final inspection last week, and I'm pleased to report to the Board that we passed our inspection, and I want to give credit to my staff because it's a big undertaking to get through that, and particular recognition should go to Captain Amy Brog and Warren Reggins, who really are the two-point people that helped us get through that. So, I wanted to recognize them and the rest of my staff for that, and update you on that grant. And I apologize, I said, "I wanted to make sure I got any for you so you would have the last word today," so, but thank you for the time.
Thank you very much for that coming up. I appreciate it. Just a couple other things. I mean, we touched upon the Fairgrounds. It would be really nice if you go out there and see it. The gateway is really unbelievable. Very, very impressed with it. The fencing the same way. I mean, it truly is an outstanding project. Is Matt still here? You guys did a great job. And, you know, that's, that's what a lot of our employees do. They do a great job, and we appreciate that. We, I was at the, there were a number of us that did the groundbreaking at CC Tech for the manufacturing wing that's going to be installed there, and we have to thank our State Senator Michael Testa for initiating this, but we also have to thank, always have to give credit where credit is due. When you look at bipartisanship, okay, because that's, that's its need. I mean, everybody knows that Michael Testa, our Senator, is Republican, and in order to get anything done, when you have a complete Democrats' House, the Assembly, the Senate, and the Governor, you need help, and that's where John Bersacelli, the State Senator John Bersacelli stepped in. He worked very, very well with our, Michael Testa, and that's what got the money, and that's very important. It's nice when you have bipartisanship, and that's what we had in this county. Both Senators represent Cumberland County, and they worked very, very well together, and I just wanted to make sure everybody knew. I have known John Bersacelli for many, many years, and I think he's a class act, but I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that he helped bring this in because of Michael Testa. He initiated it, Michael Testa, but you always need somebody from the other side to help him out. So, I thought, I think that was important to do. Next month, we're going to have a presentation. I just wanted to let everybody know, and Matt Sarsky is going to be giving that presentation. His department planning, as we're very, very, very hard on this state plan. We've had a lot of conversations together. We're going to have more planning meetings, but I believe, and I'm perking them on, we're the only county that actually did what we did to make sure we had 100% of it, okay? And I've asked other counties all over South Jersey if they did this, and the answer is no. What we did in Cumberland County was we literally contacted every city, township, okay, to make sure that they were involved in the state planning. We actually got them to change their master plan for the cities and the townships, which was very important. This planning hasn't been done for over 20 years, state planning, and that being said, what we had to do was make sure that the different municipalities looked out, not two, three, five years, 10 years, but 15 years down the road, as to what they want their city to look like or their township to look like years from now, because there are state departments that use this against us when we try to develop. And I can't wait for the presentation. I think it's a great presentation. I was able to see, and that's why we asked Matt to come in next, next month to see this presentation, okay, so he can show it to you. I, I got to commend him, and I got to commend all the cities that got involved. Did we finally get the last one in, Matt?
Yeah.
Okay. We had one, one, one city that hadn't come in the last time I talked to them, and that city is in. So, that means we had 100% participation with all the cities and the townships, and a lot of them changed their master plan and their zoning as to where they would like to have things done for the future. So, I want to commend him and all the cities in the county. That's all I have to say. Is there anything else, Matt?
There's no need for executive session?
No need for that. It looks like we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All favor.
Aye.
Don't leave guys leave. I have to get to the south.